Okay, welcome everyone to the January thirty first, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting of the San Francisco Elections Commission's Budget and Oversight of Public Elections Committee. I am the Chair, Chris Trudonik. The time is now three oh five P M., and I call the meeting to order. This meeting is being held remotely on the online Webex platform. It's authorized by California Government Code Section five four nine five three E, and Mayor Breed's forty-fifth supplement to her February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty emergency proclamation. Members of the Elections Commission may attend this meeting remotely. In that event, those members will participate and vote by video. Members of the public may attend the meeting to observe and provide public comments online. In addition to participating in real time, interested persons are encouraged to participate in this meeting by submitting public comment in writing by noon on the day of the meeting to elections dot commission at S F gov dot O R G. It will be shared with the commission after the meeting has been concluded and will be included as part of the official meeting file. Public comment will be available on each item on this agenda. Each member of the public will be allowed three minutes to speak. Opportunities to speak during the public comment period are available via phone call by calling area code four one five six five five zero 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 one. Again, the phone number is four one five six five five zero 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 one. Access code is two four nine seven zero eight zero zero one five eight. Again, that's two four nine seven zero eight zero zero one five eight. And then followed by the pound sign and then press pound again to join as an attendee. You'll hear a beep when you're connected to the meeting. You'll be automatically muted and in listening mode only. When your item of interest comes up, dial star three to raise your hand to be added to the public comment line. You will then hear you have raised your hand to ask a question. Please wait until the host calls on you. The line will be silent as you wait your turn to speak. Ensure you're in a quiet location. Before you speak, mute the sound of any equipment around you, including television, radio, or computer. It is especially important that you mute your computer if you're watching via the web link to prevent feedback and echo when you speak. When the system message says your line has been unmuted, then it is your turn to speak. You're encouraged to state your name clearly. As soon as you begin speaking, you will have three minutes to provide your public comment or six minutes if you are online with an interpreter. You will hear a bell go off when you have thirty seconds remaining. If you change your mind and wish to withdraw yourself from the public comment line, press star three again. You'll hear the system say you have lowered your hand. When a phone is not available, you can use your computer web browser. Make sure the participant's side panel is showing by clicking on the participants icon. Make sure the participants panel is expanded in the side panel by pressing the small arrow indicator in the panel. You should see a list of panelists, followed by a list of attendees. At the bottom of the list of attendees is a small button or icon that looks like a hand. Press the hand icon to raise your hand. You'll be unmuted when it is time for you to comment. When you're done with your comment, click the hand icon again to lower your hand. Once your three minutes have expired, staff will thank you and you will be muted. You'll hear your line has been muted. Public comment instructions are also listed on the last page of the agenda. Okay, so I will now proceed to the roll call for the meeting. Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Present.
Commissioner Stone.
Present.
And I'm Commissioner Trudonik, I'm also present. So we have a quorum, all members present. Okay, so next, as part of agenda item number one, a member of the commission will state our land acknowledgement. Would either of the members like to state the acknowledgement for today?
I'm happy to do it. Every time I'm unmuting, it's making a loud sound. It's not making that sound on your end, is it?
No, we don't hear it.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to do the land acknowledgement.
Okay.
The San Francisco Elections Commission acknowledges that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Remaitish Alone, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land, in accordance with their traditions, the Remaitish Alone have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors and relatives of the Remaitish community and affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Stone. So, or President Stone. Okay, so let's move on to general public comments. Public comment on any issue within the committee's general jurisdiction that is not covered by another item on this agenda. So we have one member of the public whose hand is raised. So Mr. Turner. I am unmuting you. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. And I can see today is different on the, on the visual display because I can see now the commissioners as well as their names. Just for the record, that's appreciated. Okay, so the, I wanted to give a brief update for general public comment. Shasta County has now, their supervisors voted to remove Dominion Voting Systems from the county based on their lack of appropriate performance within that county. So I think that is a story to be investigated by our commissioners. It just shows that it is possible for the supportive supervisors just to stand up and say that we don't want intellectual property protected software code in the voting systems for obvious reasons. We don't want corporate control over the systems and we want to inspire public confidence. So that is something to take a look at. Also, in New Jersey, a senator there has put forth legislation mandating open source paper ballot systems. So the proprietary systems would become illegal at that point in the state of New Jersey. And they're hoping to join Mississippi and New Hampshire, moving toward open source software, paper ballot systems. So I just wanted to give a brief update there and thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. So are there any other members of the public that would like to comment? Okay, so okay, seeing no further people with their hands raised, we will move on to the next item. And at this point.
Just regarding the next, my apologies, Deputy City Attorney Flores. The commission met two weeks ago, I think, and already approved this resolution and the resolution covers subcommittees. So you no longer need to adopt this resolution during your subcommittee meeting.
Okay. But we should still have the agenda item though, since it's listed, or?
Um, I mean,
Is it okay for me to skip the item?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think you could take public comment if anybody wants to comment, Mr. Phil calls there.
Okay, so I guess, yeah, we'll proceed to the next item. But before we do that, I'm, we're just going to do an administrative step where I'm going to transfer the, the host privileges to President Stone so she can manage the public comment.
Sounds good.
Version of the meeting, so let me just see if I can figure out how to do that. Okay, so I think you should be the host now, President Stone. So you'll be able to manage the public for the items going forward. Okay, so let's move on to agenda item number three. Discussion Possible Action on Resolution on Continuation of Remote Elections Commission Meetings. So as Deputy City Attorney Flores said, we don't need to adopt a motion for this item. But let's open it up to public comment for starters.
There are no hands raised.
Okay. So our commissioners, is there any discussion or would you just like to move on to the next item?
I think we can just move forward.
Okay, sounds good. So agenda item number four, Discussion of Possible Action. Department of Elections Proposed Twenty Twenty-three, Twenty Twenty-five Budgets. The commission is required to conduct two reviews of the department's budget no less than fifteen days apart. On Friday, January twenty-seventh, the Director of Elections submitted its budget for commission review. This will be the first review with the second follow to follow the February fifteenth regular commission meeting. Upon its approval, the budget will be submitted to the Office of the Mayor no later than February twenty-first. Okay, so I'd like to turn it over to your Director Ernst to, you know, introduce your budget. You know, really appreciate all the work you put into this, you know, as you do every year. And I also appreciate the additional information that you added that we had requested over the summer, I think it was. So thank you very much, Director Ernst.
You're welcome, and thank you, Commissioner Trudonik. So just briefly, so the department's budget proposals for, for the next two fiscal years represent around twenty, just over twenty-four million dollars for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and around twenty-seven point six for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Our budgets are fairly consistent from year to year. And really what drives our budgets are the number and types of elections that we need to conduct with the upcoming presidential primary and general election cycles. Those are the bigger elections in the series. And so we tend to also have higher turnout, greater number of cards, and larger voter information pamphlets, which of course increases our budgets compared to, let's say, the gubernatorial cycles. Going into this budget period, the mayor's office issued instructions for departments to seek to reduce their budgets by five percent in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and then again, eight percent in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. But what also happened in November, two thousand and twenty-two was voters approved Proposition Local Measure H, which moved the local contests that would, were scheduled to appear on the ballot November, two thousand and twenty-three to have them appear instead in the November, two thousand and twenty-four election, which essentially saved the cities and also affected the department's budget by nine million dollars. Now, overall, the cost savings for not having election November, two thousand and twenty-three is not the full nine million dollars because around two point one needs to move into fiscal, for the next two elections in the next two fiscal years. And so we're saving about seven million dollars total this year. Then when you combine the effect of that seven million dollars in the next two fiscal years, we're actually meeting the target, the thirteen percent reduction targets the mayor's office put forward. Now, with that said, we're still looking for efficiencies in our processes and in ways that we can reduce costs. We're not just relying on the fact that we're, that we've lost an election essentially for the upcoming fiscal year. You also see in our budget that nearly half our costs are from the non-personal operating cost category. And what's in that category is ballot production and assembly, voter information pamphlet production, the voting system lease, the warehouse lease, translation costs, and really a lot of other operational type costs that we, that we incur each election. And in the memo that we provided to the commission, those costs, we tried to break those down for you so you get a sense of how the individual costs combined with, within that larger category. Another legislative change that occurred that's affecting our costs the upcoming fiscal years is Assembly Bill fourteen sixteen. Assembly Bill fourteen sixteen allows for, or requires the printing of proponent and opponents on, for state measures to be printed on, on the ballots. And just our initial mockups of ballots, we think that will increase the space required for state measures by almost fifty percent. Going into the presidential primary, that's certainly going into the presidential general election, we do expect to have more, at least one more card based on having this additional text in the, in the state measures. And it's not only just the English that we have to include, but it's also the Filipino and the Spanish, which requires more space than does the English and the Chinese. And we have to set up the English ballots in this, with the same spacing as we do with the Filipino and Spanish languages because of the, of the way that the, where the, the voting targets are positioned on the card. And so even though the English might require less space, we still have to provide the same amount of space on the cards. The voting targets line up in the same area on the, on the ballot cards for the voting system to read. Our, our budget does include costs associated with the Elections Commission. And if the commission wants to, we didn't make any changes. These are what are called carryforward costs. So the costs that are in the proposed budgets for the commission are essentially costs that were moved forward from the previous fiscal, the current fiscal year that was approved last year. So if the, if the commission wants or seeks or wants to request any sort of additional items or be able to have expenditures greater than what's listed in the proposed budget, then just send me the information. But we also need justification for those changes that we can provide to the mayor's office. And then potentially the, the mayor's office can discuss those with the commission as well. Again, the memo that we provided to the commission, something we've been doing for the past several years, and it provides an overview of the budget forms and provides a breakout. And as Commissioner Trudonik mentioned, it also provides information that the commission has specifically requested from the department. The budget forms are what we submit to the mayor's office. So these are, these are the actual forms that the mayor's office will see once we input them into this, into the budget system. And the commission, many years, years ago, we requested for us to submit these forms. So that's, that's the basis of the information that you have today. Again, as Commissioner Trudonik mentioned, this is the first public hearing of the department's proposed budgets. And the second one will occur on February fifteenth, when the full commission meets. And then the department must enter its, its budget into the, the budget system by February twenty-first. So this budget today is not the final budget of the department. The commission can have comments, the mayor's office will likely have comments. Then even after the commission meets, potentially the mayor's office will have more comments before we enter the information into the, the budget system. Then again, in June, the board supervisors will review our budget and potentially make changes or request changes as well. And with that, that's like, that's my presentation. What I found really is just taking questions from the commissioners so we can navigate through these forums and I can answer your questions. That's probably the best way to understand what, what these numbers mean. So I can take your questions at this point.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Ernst. Yeah, so commissioners, we have just this one main agenda item today. So there's, there's plenty of time to ask questions. I definitely have a number of them, but who would like to start out? Okay, Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Ernst. What happens if there are special elections?
So it depends if we can absorb the cost of a special election within our existing budget, which we couldn't. So then we would, we would seek a supplemental appropriation from the, the board, which we approved by the mayor's office. But our first stop would be the mayor's office to let them know of the estimated cost. But then that must go through a board process for final approval.
And say you have a, let's just say a, a special election occurred, maybe at the Board of Supervisors or, you know, because aren't there some new rules around that? Like if a vacancy becomes available, doesn't there have to be an election fairly, even after an appointment? Are the costs around, just say, a one-time special election? I would think that they'd be almost as much as a lot, I mean, except for the fact that you don't have this very thick ballot, that they may be almost as much as a regular election. Am I, am I crazy? Because you have to do all the same things. It's like looking for thirty or three hundred.
There are fixed costs, however, if, in the case of a election for supervisor, it's a district election.
Oh, yeah, district, oh, yeah.
Less. But then also, we, I think since it's a local election, we could conduct a fully vote by mail election with City Hall as a satellite voting center, which would reduce the cost. If there were a citywide election, again, we could also, I believe, could conduct a fully vote by mail election. And then since it is a municipal, local election, special election, we could consolidate the number of polling places. And then the ballot card, which would be one significant driver of cost, would be, would be one ballot card for a special election. It wouldn't be multiple cards. Then of course, the voter information pamphlet would be much smaller for a vacancy election. And really, just, just having the, the one contest in this example and the one card and the smaller V I P, that's just, that just reduces costs in so many of other parts of our operations. So yes, there are fixed costs, but they would be significantly less for a special vacancy election if it was local.
Okay, I have just a few questions. So I, I did see over and over the election mail sorting and processing systems. There's concern about how that will handle the expanded ballot and you're retiring. I think you're retiring or you're looking to add the machine. It's the servers that you retire. Have you, have you run a sample ballot through the existing election mail sorting and processing systems? I mean, what that potential sample ballot could be? Because so many of our, our contests, particularly in the, at the Board of Supervisors level, can be very close, as we all know. And the counting can go on for days and weeks. And if this even prolongs it further, I just have some concerns about that. Having been in that situation where I sat around for a month waiting for final results on a, on a contest. And I would just, it would, it would be agony for, for the supporters and for the candidate if, if we even extend it longer because of our, I mean, I sort of see like this scenario potentially unfolding that, that I don't know if the money exists. I mean, you got to fix it now or fix it later.
Yeah, so we've already received sample packets of vote by mail ballots from our print vendor. And we've already run those through our, our envelope opener extractor equipment, and also through the, the ballot sorting equipment. And in seven cards is the max that we can run through the, the equipment with the current style of ballot that we have. So our vendor, our print vendor is still experimenting on different ways of, different approaches to assembling the vote by mail ballots, to maybe placing, having one less fold, depending on the size of the envelope that we use. And so we're looking at, the vendors looking at different, I think I mentioned it's the commissioning, to a different size of the envelope. Because right now, we're using a letter-sized envelope, even though, even though it seems really large. And that reduces costs because the mailing cost for letter sizes is much less than, which the next size up, which is a flat. But I think there's a little bit of space we can go up on the envelopes. There's a little bit of space we can go out on the envelope, which allows, allows for a wider opening, which could potentially allow for a different folding style, which would make the cards less thick as in the envelope. So as it goes through the equipment, it would have more flexibility. So yes, we've, we've tested already, we, we received samples, we're maxed out at, at seven for sure. But just because we've run samples doesn't mean that it would run perfectly during the election cycle. Because what we've run so far are the perfect examples from the vendor, not what the voters send back to us, which, you know, when they, sometimes the voters put the cards back into the envelope, the envelope becomes a football essentially. It's just a big, a big, thick oval ball that's going through our equipment and that, that could cause jamming. Another, like, there's a lot of belts, I mean, just to get in, to really get deep, and there's a lot of belts that could snap on our, on our sorting machine, depending on the torque that's placed on them. So yeah, we've tested it, we're not done. Seven cards is our max right now for what we can do. If we, if we make changes to the envelopes and ballots, and maybe we can go to eight, I don't know yet. And then the extra sorter would be one that we would potentially place at the warehouse and not necessarily do the, the full scan at the warehouse, but get, capture the initial images and also run our provisional ballots through those so that we, we don't lose time if we have to slow the process. We were able to stay, we're able to add a, to, to supplement a step at the warehouse on election night prior to transferring the ballots to City Hall for, for the processing afterwards.
Just a comment, I mean, this, we're not going to undo Proposition H. So, and we have the, this Assembly Bill. So it looks like this ballot is only going to get bigger, which I, which will be, which will be interesting to see how the voters react to that. Because I know I'm one that, a long ballot can be very challenging at times. But I just wonder, does it make sense to have some sort of, what do we call it in, in the construction trade? Like you add ten percent for the possibility? And I know that this isn't the time, given the city's budget, but you also need to prepare for the worst possible scenario that this isn't going to work and you need to be ready. And I just wonder if you need to, to build in some sort of supplemental line item for a possible, you know, purchase of, of, of sorting machines that will handle the larger ballot. I, I, I think it would be prudent to do so. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I wouldn't, I think it would be a difficult situation that you would potentially be in if all of a sudden, you know, no matter, your, your best, best-laid plans could go awry because of things that are somewhat out of your control, although we kind of can see it right now.
That's a good point. Certainly look at that. If we get a, if we go to beyond seven cards, our next step would be to have monolingual ballots. We wouldn't have the bilingual ballots, and that would reduce the, the page count there. So there is another step that we can take to reduce the, the card count if necessary before going into, before having to bring in more equipment or different equipment. Yeah, we can certainly build that into our planning, start looking at that.
I, I, I do think that that would be a prudent thing to do, and I think it would be worth discussing because the voters voted on this. And going to monolingual ballots, that would undermine the whole mission of equity. So, and I, I just see this only getting more and more complicated. So you either buy them now, buy them later, whenever. But I do think that it makes sense to plan, to, to put that out there, reality-wise, that this isn't going to, we're not going to see this get smaller. So it's best to confront reality, I, I always think. And, and, you know, say this is what it's going to take, let's not, let's not set ourselves up for failure. I mean, maybe it seems exorbitant, but I just do think that I, I would hate to see you standing there on election day saying, gosh, the, the machine broke, you know? Just something to think about. I have, I have other things, but you know what? I've talked too long, so forget it. But I do think that that's something that you really need to prepare for. I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hayden Crowley. President Stone, would you like to ask some questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Hayden Crowley, feel free to keep going if you wanted to run through your list of questions. Okay, we can always come back. The sorting machines were actually something on my mind as well. So I really appreciate you bringing that up. And I also just wanted to say thank you to the director for putting together such a robust memo. It's actually incredibly helpful in, this is my first budget review with the department. And so having the memo to look by, side by side with the budget was incredibly helpful. So kudos to you in putting it together and also the former commissioners who asked for this type of thing. I think it's really, really helpful for us and for the public. The, there were a couple of questions I had that were more like deep, like nuanced questions. And the sorting was one of them. The other question I had was about the, the extra ballot processing space. You talked about how in two thousand and twenty, the department used the Bill Graham Civic Auditorium. And I wanted to just ask if that, and that as a result of like the need for space, there will be the shift to doing days and night shifts. And so I wanted to ask if there were fees, like what the fees and costs were associated with the use of that space? And, or if that was, if there was some, yeah, let's just, let me start there. Were there costs associated with that? And if so, what, what were they?
Yeah, I think we paid around eight hundred thousand dollars for the use of that space during the
That's it?
Twenty election, yeah.
For how long?
We were there for probably five weeks, six weeks.
Wow, eight, well, and I mean, I'm sure because of COVID.
And that doesn't include like paying or, or, you know, the charges from D T to, to set up equipment and connect. Then we also had costs with the, different costs, but we had the, the voting, voting center outside Bill Graham. But inside, yeah, it's around eight hundred thousand dollars rent of space and for setup, for that election, I think.
Sorry, I'm having a little bit of fog brain. Can you remind me how, how long you said, how many weeks you said? Can you remind me how, how long you said, how many weeks you said, three to four?
Six weeks that we were there.
Five to six. Thanks, um. I was just thinking about that in the context of use of city spaces and ways to get creative with costs as to not, uh, requiring the day and night shifts necessarily. Um, but $8,000 for five to six weeks is, or, yeah, five to six weeks is, um, actually very small. Um, um, sure.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
You're on mute. You're on mute.
You're, you're muted.
Point of clarification, I believe Director Arns said 800,000, didn't you, Director Arns?
Eight hundred thousand. I was very confused about why it was 8,000, thank you. Um, okay, let me just rewrite that, thank you. Um, I probably have a follow-up question to that, but I'll, I'll kind of wait. I did wanted to ask about, um, a different, um, software or technology tool. You, you said that, um, four of the 10 servers have exceeded the lifespan, but you're only planning to purchase two? And I was curious as to why only two? Is that just as a cost-saving, um, measure or, or what the rationale was?
It's, it's cost-saving. Also, we're trying to limit the expenditures we have. We're able to keep these two servers going for another year. And with just every year, we ask for two servers in the budget, we just keep swapping them out as time goes forward.
Got it, okay, that, that's helpful, thank you. Um, and then I, I, I had kind of a, a very specific question, which was around the, um, let me see, page seven. It's, it just helps my, can go back to my notes. Um, the, no, not page, yeah, page seven. Um, just around the, uh, the ballot sorting and maintenance and that process. I know that the department uses humans to, um, verify signatures. And I was wondering if, um, the, the, um, if it's easy for us or if there are features accessible to the department to automate that? Um, I know that some other counties do that, um, from like an equity perspective, but I also wonder if from an efficiency perspective, that's something, um, that the department has considered.
Yeah, we've, we've looked into it and we can add that to our sorting equipment. It's already a feature that's, uh, sort of built in, but it's not activated. That topic goes back and forth. There's times when people are okay with automated signature review, uh, there's times when people aren't. Uh, we've, we've put a lot of time into our signature verification processes. Uh, and so we've, we've just continued to have that, that human element in reviewing signatures and making sure that, you know, that people, that the voters know that each of their signatures are, are being reviewed by one of our, our personnel rather than, um, by equipment and also people who are concerned about equipment, uh, in elections. They are less concerned potentially about our, our personnel reviewing signatures. Uh, we can look at it again, certainly.
That makes sense. Honestly, it makes sense that it's, sorry to cut you off. Um, I was just gonna say that it makes sense that there was a back and forth, that there's often a back and forth. I can completely see the multiple, um, conversations around it. I was just thinking about it in the context of efficiencies, um, but it makes, that makes total sense. And it's not necessarily an ask to go back and look at it. It was more just, um, understanding the decision by the department. Cause I know it's pretty robust, I, I, I remember walking through it and seeing the process and thinking to myself, oh my goodness, this is quite an intense process to verify signatures, so, um, that makes sense. I do have other questions, but like Commissioner Hayden Crowley, I will table them to pass them over to Chair Jordanic, um, for his questions.
Okay, uh, thank you, President Stone, um. So, um, yeah, thank you again, Director Arns. I was also, before I, um, get into some of my questions, I was impressed with the, you know, some of the creativity and the cutting the costs. Like, for example, the, you know, combining some of the hiring processes to get some efficiencies there. I thought that was a real interesting idea. And I know you did the group interviews from, from in the past, so it's kind of a continuation of that. Um, so I'll just start with the memo. Um, on page three, you talk a little bit about the, the AB 1416 with the, the ballot labels. And, um, one thing I thought would be helpful for perhaps the readers of the memo. I know you say it's 30 days before the submission of the ballot measures. And do you know like what calendar date that is for the March, November approximately? Cause I don't know when those dates are.
Uh, around February 5th, 6th?
For, is it 30 days in advance of the submission of the ballot measure or?
Do you mean for the, for the city to?
For the, so, yeah, my apologies, so the board needs to, um, to pass legislation to opt into the, the additional ballot labels?
Yeah, it's 30 days prior to the filing deadline, which is 88 days before election day.
Oh, 88 days?
Right, so you're looking at 100 and, and what, 18 days?
Okay.
Prior to election day.
So it's about, um.
Three and a half months.
Yeah, and then, um, are you going to notify the board of this option? Or do you assume they just know about it already? Or what's your approach gonna be for that?
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll have to inform the board, right now we, we could not add this. We, I mean, we just couldn't be able to do it. So if the board is, I mean, we already have the voter information pamphlet in San Francisco, we have the paid arguments. So I think we have a, we have a really substantial method of informing voters of who's for and, and against, who are the proponents and opponents of, of local measures. Um, but yeah, I'll have to inform the board and, uh, if they, if the city were to adopt this, I really don't know how we could conduct the election.
Uh, President Stone?
I just had a point of clarification and thank you, this was actually one of my big questions that I had meant to bring up. Um, I, and this is just my ignorance, um, for, um, Director Arns, is that process, would you have to vote on it? With, sorry, would the Board of Supervisors have to vote on it from, uh, kind of sweeping any site, any type of ballot measures? Or is that inclusive of both state and local elections? Um, and is there any implication for specific ballot measures? Or is it just all in one? They would have to vote if they would include all ballot measures would be, um, now on the cards as opposed to just voters looking at the voter information palette for pa- pamphlet for, um, opponents and supporters?
So the state measures is required, so the board takes no action on those. And then the board would take action on local measures? The, the legislation doesn't distinguish between charter amendments, ordinances, declarations of policy? So, I mean, I, I, um, so I really can't answer if the board could partition or parse out that opportunity for some measures but not others, but my thinking is they'd want it for all measures.
Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, thank you, President Stone. Um, yeah, just to follow up with that, so, so basically, while the board has this option, you would basically recommend to them or tell them that this would not be something you'd be able to implement, essentially?
It'd be a challenge. And if, you know, if it's something the board wants to do, maybe there's other avenues that could be taken to provide similar service to the voters.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so back on the, on the, the number
Commissioner Stone had a question.
Oh, sorry, President Stone?
Yeah, one thing I was, thank you, um, one thing I was just thinking is, it makes sense that you wouldn't want to, uh, or that you would recommend against it to the Board of Supervisors. One thing that could be creative, just, and I know this is kind of outside of the budget, but if there's a way to even just include a line that says to learn who is, who opposes and who supports this measure, refer to the voter information packet, so that at least voters know that, that, that information exists in their voter information packet without it needing to be on the ballot itself.
Okay, um, so back on the, the number of ballot cards. You know, it's good to hear that you've been doing some testing on your existing machines. And one question I had was, of the, of the different machines that you have, which are the ones that would be affected by the, the thickness? Is it, is it just the sorter or is it also like the extractor as well or?
Both.
Both? Are there any other machines that are affected aside from the space and things?
Well, we haven't not, we have not provided the packets to the post office yet, so I don't know how this could, would affect the post office's equipment.
Okay, and then, one of my questions was, um, have you thought about or even looked into the possibility of like obtaining new sorting machines and extracting machines? Or would that be just out of the question or, or are they not available or, I don't really know the implications?
Yeah, at this point, we want, we want to try to use the existing equipment. Instead of trying to go for a big purchase, we, as, as Commissioner Hayden Crowley mentioned, we can certainly consider, uh, looking at other equipment to see if we could bring it in.
Okay, and then are those machines you have, are those owned by the city or are you leasing those?
We, the city purchased that, that equipment.
Okay, and then, um, and also can you just repeat again, what was the history on the mono, the bilingual ballot versus monolingual?
Well, previously the city had trilingual ballots. Then when Filipino was, was required for, uh, election, for, for election information, uh, we didn't have enough space for the three, or, or, all four languages on the ballot. Uh, so we went to bilingual ballots. If we went to monolingual ballots, which, which counties do, it's, it's not something that would be unique to San Francisco. Then those people who requested information in Chinese, Spanish and Filipino would receive ballots in those languages and everyone else would receive an English, uh, language ballot. I'm not advocating for this, this is not something that I'm suggesting we want to move to. But that would be, that would be our next step to save space on, on the, on the ballots themselves, is to go to monolingual.
Is that currently just a departmental decision or are there laws around that? Look clear here.
Uh, there's, I'm not aware of laws around bilingual, trilingual, quadrilingual ballots. I mean, we, we, we're like I say, we were, we were trilingual, went to bilingual. And that was a decision that the department made. Certainly we, uh, we, we did a lot of outreach around that, provided, you know, uh, input, had, received input. We didn't just do it unilaterally.
Okay, and then I'll just ask one more question, then I'll kind of turn it over to others to rotate through a little bit. On the, on the space issue with City Hall, I know that you said that your current plan is to kind of just stick with only the one location at City Hall. And then, um, you know, possibly using the warehouse as well, but I was curious, like, are, were there any other locations near City Hall that you like seriously looked at or got price quotes on, aside from Bill Graham? I know you said they're expensive, but I know there are buildings on the west side of the, the City Hall and, but.
You mean in 2020?
Uh, well, just in general, like, given the space issues, are there, are there even, are there other locations near City Hall that are even an option?
I mean, we went to the War Memorial, we had meetings with them, we went to the museum, the Asian Arts Museum. Uh, we looked at, we went to Bill Graham, uh, you know, we, we looked at different places. Uh, but, you know, one thing is transporting ballots is, is a real concern for a lot of people. And so you really want to reduce the amount of travel ballots do. Uh, so ideally we want to maintain or retain our processes within City Hall. Uh, potentially we could use the north or south, south light courts for ballot production, uh, for a period of time. Uh, there have been rooms available in City Hall that we've been using that potentially we may lose, but, but we may be able to, be able to use those going forward. Um, but once, even in 2020, moving the ballots from Bill Graham to City Hall required an escort with the sheriff and, you know, there's always concern of the optics on that also. Uh, you know, anything, things, it was, you know, an active time in 2020 outside City Hall. There was concern about moving those ballots. So yeah, the, the best, the first starting point is to have all the processes in one place. That if we can, if we have to build out from there with, within City Hall and then potentially our warehouse, we already have established practices, practices for moving materials and ballots to and from that location.
Okay, I understand, okay, thanks. So I'll, I'll turn it over to, um, other commissioners, Commissioner Hayden Crowley, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, um, thank you, Director Arns. A couple just quick questions, I, I think. Um, the, one of your goals is to, um, seek grant funding for local organizations that are well situated to help disseminate vital election information to members of the city hard to reach and vulnerable. I, I'm kind of looking at my notes, uh, there. Um, how is the success on that measured, working with these groups? Have you been able to measure that you've seen an increase and how is this working with them? And is there some sort of accountability on, on that?
So, uh, for the most part, it's worked really well. This last election, we had to issue three RFPs, uh, to, to, uh, enlist organizations that worked, uh, with especially black voters. Uh, and then we, for the, we had, the accountability component is we require reports that has, that responsive metrics that we provide within the grants themselves. And then if we don't, and if we don't receive these reports and if these reports don't indicate that the groups met the metrics or sought to meet the metrics, then we, we won't provide the, the, the funding. Uh, for the most part, the groups are, you know, they're very engaged, they're, they're, they're very energetic around getting outreach to, to folks during an election cycle. Um, this past cycle, there were a few groups that didn't provide their final reports. Uh, we, we've contacted them several times, um, but that's rare. Uh, but usually it's a, it's a very good response from community organizations regarding these grants. And they actually, uh, do put a lot of time effort into, to getting, to really taking a lot of our materials out into the community and engaging with, with their constituencies.
So it's all kind of one-on-one, do you do any social media advertising, anything like that?
Of course, yes. I mean, for the RFPs or for?
Just, just for the outreach?
Oh, yeah, so we, so we, especially during the election cycle, we have Twitter and Facebook and, you know, and then like all time, every time we, most times when our outreach group goes out, we're, we're tweeting from the location so people know that we're out there. That's, that's happening even now during, during the off cycle.
So you're posting, but you, but you don't have an advertising budget? You don't, you don't advertise on Facebook or, or, um, or, I mean, I don't even know if the demographics would, would justify that. I don't know if the people that you're trying to reach are even on those social media platforms. But increasingly that is, I, I see is the most effective way to meet people at their water cooler, if, for lack of a better metaphor. Um, so, but it doesn't sound though, like, so when you're out there, it's really more retail. You're out there shaking hands and meeting people one-on-one. It's, you're not meeting them at, you're not, other than tweeting and, and posting on Facebook, you're not doing a, a, a full-scale advertising program through social media?
Not specific through social media, we, we will do the, the direct messaging occasionally for some elections, we're not really funded for that. We don't have, we don't have a communications division.
I, I know that.
You know, we, you know, we don't, we don't have, uh, you know, communication, uh, what do you call it, PIOs, uh, here? Uh, we, so we do all the work ourselves. Um, but I, I'll tell you too, really the people that are the focus of those grants are the folks that you want to have interpersonal contact with. They're not the ones, my, my view are, who would be receptive, responsive, aware of social media.
Okay.
Maybe someone would tell them that's, you know, and, and really one really fantastic example are the non-citizen pool of voters. That group specifically needs to have personal interaction. I think, my, my view to, to really, to engage and to draw them to know, one, to be aware of their opportunity to vote. And then two, to understand how to enter the process, uh, and also to, you know, to know to contact the department. So, really, I, I think the shaking of the hands is, is, if more of that could be done, that would be better.
Okay, I, I was just, I didn't really think, think of it in terms of an either or proposition. I'm just looking at ways to increase your budget when you can't really do that.
Oh, I, I will.
But in, while, while we're at it, let's throw some Chromebooks in, um, for the commissioners.
I was waiting for that email, you know?
Well, I'll get there, um, but, um, uh, I, I, I kind of look at it as, you know, the, there's a lot of buckets to fill. And certainly the first place I would go is shaking hands and talking to people one-on-one, you build that trust. But if, in the best of all worlds, you also want to look at other ways to reach folks too, in case you did, you missed them at the bus stop or something like that. Um, the only other question that I have is, and, uh, Chris mentioned that you, you know, he was impressed with the, your, um, efficiencies in the efficiencies in the group interviews and onboarding process. I was a little taken aback by that, I have to say, I kind of thought, yeah, um, how are poll workers evaluated at the end of that, and, because, you know, hiring is such a tricky thing, and you have to do such a massive amount of it. You know, it's, it, I, I'm certain that it's not a hundred percent perfect each time, and then to bring them in a group setting, I don't know how you would be able to talk to each and every one of them and get a sense.
So poll workers, we don't, we don't do the group interviews, that's, the, the group interviews are with our temporary as-needed personnel that we bring in. Uh, so the, the, the poll worker still is actually a one-on-one conversation with the coordinators. Uh, and then there is, then the field election deputy, who is assigned a certain number of polling places to support an election day, they, the field election deputy will provide, not report, but um, uh, reflections of, of, of their interactions with the poll workers, and also you know, any sort of interactions we had with poll workers on election day, we, we track that. So we have a sense of who's, who's, who's doing, who's able to provide good services to voters on, at the polling places on election day. Uh, the group interviews with the temporary as needed, it, it's a big change, but, uh, and that's something that I, I really haven't, uh, implemented myself, I admit, but it's, it's really, it's, it's been really effective, and I have to, I'm, I'm very impressed with the, with the personnel that have been working with the department the past few years during the time that we've implemented this, uh, group interview. Uh, and now we'll do the group training, which would be a little different dynamic, because not, there are commonalities, but there are also differences in the, in the processes for which the training occurs. Um, but yeah, it's, it's been, we've, we've really, we, last few years, we've had just a wonderful group of people down here, both the, the, full-time and also the temporary as needed, it's, it's, it's really been nice.
Good, okay, thank you, I'm, I'm, don't have any further questions, thank you, Director Ernst.
Okay, President Stone, thank you, Commissioner Hayden Crowley, President Stone.
Yeah, I had a couple of follow-up questions, um. I just wanted to add a little bit of color on the, um, community group funding, um, those grants. Um, just, uh, from my personal anecdotal experience, and the community groups I've interacted with um, during my time on the commission, have only had great things to say about that, that having the funding come from the department, rather than the department trying to reach those specific people, but really giving those folks who are in the communities themselves, working with those folks, the resources to be able to do it, has been, um, really, really well received, so I think that's great on the department. Um, in fact, the only, the only feedback I've got, I've heard about it, is that they want more money. Um, unsurprisingly, but I think that's a testament to, um, the value of it. I actually wanted to ask, and apologies if this is a, a detail that I missed. Um, it, there won't be any cuts to those grants for this year, correct? It's just gonna remain the same?
Not on our side.
Okay, um, so, in twenty twenty-four, understanding that you are concerned about kind of his, it be, not concerned, but it will be this historic election, it's gonna be enormous. Do you anticipate providing an increase, uh, in a comparable increase in grants to those community groups to be able to support the outreach necessary to, um, deliver the same quality that they would for kind of past elections, or is it staying the same?
Right now, it's the same.
Okay.
Certainly, that's, you know, the three, the three hundred thousand dollars seems so far to have been a, a good number, because it seems to be the limit of where we can attract uh, sufficient numbers of community organizations who would interact with the, the folks that we want to, to reach. Uh, and also, we're trying, we didn't raise it because of the, the budget instructions, we're not trying to raise our, our costs. But that's certainly something we can consider, and if, you know, if that's something the commission thinks is a good idea, we can totally consider that.
Yeah, thank you, um, I think for now, that makes sense, um, and if, I think just knowing, having a feedback loop directly with those communities and hearing from them, you know, in anticipation for twenty twenty-four um, is, is the best way of going about it. The, um, the other thing I noticed is, and we've talked about this before, is just, um, in the, so in thinking about outreach ahead of twenty twenty-four, there are two things that, um, really I really wanted to kind of hone in on, one is registration, so, um, you know, seeing the, and I actually was thinking about this in the context of the vulnerable community, of vulnerable populations that, um, you refer to in, um, this memo, but often in the director's reports. I'm almost wondering if it makes sense to include neighborhoods or precincts that, um, have, have historically really low turnout, or, or registration rates. Um, and perhaps being able to think about ways to funnel resources into the, I know we want to be equitable in how we think about each neighborhood, but knowing that there are certain neighborhoods that consistently have lower registration rate, are there things, from an outreach perspective, that, um, the department could be thinking about to increase that, that, and, and maybe counteract that? Um, it's just an idea that I wanted to think about from an outreach perspective, and the second one is, um, also in a cost-cutting mindset, which is when there's the outreach around, uh, twenty twenty-four, just incorporating additional, um, messages around the digitizing the voter information packets. Um, I think we had talked, like, very, very briefly about, um, this, because it was new in the last election. Um, but letting people know with enough time that they can, and making sure they know that that's an option, that they don't have to receive the print. Um, just because looking at the breakdown of the budget, obviously, printing is one of the largest costs. Um, and knowing the size of the, the midterm voter information packet, I can only imagine what twenty twenty-four will look like. Um, uh, so just incorporate, I'm sure that you and the, and the rest of your, um, department are thinking about that, but just additional education around digitization of that, I think is a great, uh, a, a recommendation I wanted to make. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask about as it pertains to the ballot cards is, I don't know if you had seen this, but the Department of Justice, um, came out earlier this month, uh, basically changing the font of all of their materials moving forward as a policy. Um, for accessibility reasons, they moved from Times New Roman to Calibri, I think. Um, and I was wondering, I, I'm not, I think the department uses Arial, is that the font that is used?
Um, I think so, yeah.
Arial, I was just wondering what the history was with that, and, um, if even just changing the font would, would help streamline the length of ballots. Um, and I'm sure that there is some science to it that I don't know, so I wanted to just ask. Um, and also happy to share, I think there's actually controversy over the font change, unsurprisingly. Um, but, in, in case that's of interest to the department, um, I know that that is like a, a national thing that is being looked at generally, from accessibility standpoints.
Yeah, we, so the, the font that we use, we've, one, is readability, and then also the, the space that it takes up on the card, so that's something we've, we've looked at through time. And it also includes the, uh, Filipino and Spanish, you know, how, how that, how the font, uh, moves into those languages, the Chinese is, is a different, own category of font. Um, but, uh, yeah, we certainly have considered font in relation to space on the card and readability. We can look at it ag- again.
It's no problem, I was just curious, um, and I'm happy to share the, the, there are a couple of articles that came out about the font, um, and so it just made me think, if the, if that would help streamline the length of the ballot cards at all. Um, I think those were it. Oh, and the other question was actually to Commissioner Hayden Crowley, and if she does want to include Chromebooks, um, if she could just, I'll, I'll tell her when she returns, um, but wanting to make sure that we do provide that to the department in a timely fashion, if that's something I want to include. Um, uh, Commissioner Hayden Crowley, if Chromebooks are something of interest that you would like to have included, um, I would just recommend sending that over as soon as possible. Um, I imagine that other commissioners would be appreciative of the request as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, was there anything else, President Stone? Okay, um, so, uh, thank you, I will ask a few more questions, I wanted to, Director Ernst, focus in on a, a few of the dollar amounts. And, um, on page eight of the memo, where you provided the breakdown of the non-personnel services. Two of the, just wanted to focus on a few of the larger amounts, on, on the one that's listed as other professional services for three point one million. Has the voting system contract, VIP translation and typesetting, election night staffing, do you see that line?
On page eight?
Yeah, it's towards the bottom. Yeah, one of the things I was, wanted to know is kind of the breakdown within that category, is it just those three or four things, or were there other things too? Aside from what's listed in the parentheses?
Well, non-personal services is a very large category, that you look at, the pie chart on page twelve, sort of breaks that a bit more for you. So, do you have a question, like a specific amount of, a specific type of activity, or action?
Yeah, well, so specifically, um, what is the other professional services, is it just the four things listed there in parentheses, or are there things that are, are those just some of the?
So, yeah, those, so for our budget, that's the four items that would be in that category, or that subcategory.
Okay, so then, then I guess I was wondering about, one of them's called VIP translation and typesetting. So, is that basically the, the same as the VIP translation and production in the pie chart, the two point six five million?
Part of it, right. And the, right.
Okay, and are those, because it's such a large amount, two point six million, um, I was kind of curious, is that, is that like a single company that does the translation and production, or is that spread across multiple?
So, translations and formatting of the V I, voter information pamphlet are by one vendor, and then the production of the voter information pamphlet are by another vendor, and then the, the prep for mailing, the labeling of the voter information on the back covers by another vendor, and then the post office, of course, does the mailing.
Okay, who are, just out of curiosity, who are the vendors that, that do those, those operations that you mentioned?
So the translation and formatting is by Interethnica, and then the production printing is by Topin Merrill. And then the, the mailer, I don't know if we have a mailer, uh, mailhouse yet for the labeling for, uh, March, and then, of course, the, the post office.
Yeah, are the, for like the translation specifically, is that like a company that does a lot of different departments, or does each department kind of decide on its own which company to use?
We, so, the vendor that we use does provide services to other city agencies.
Okay. Um, and then, similarly, in that same chart on the next page, page nine, you have the printing line item where it's four point one million for one year, and then seven million for the other, the next year. I was curious about the breakdown between the ballots versus the VIPs and the poll worker manuals. I assume the poll worker manual is a lot smaller, but, so maybe it's more just the ballots versus the VIPs. Like, do you know approximately? Is it like half and half, or? Or?
Roughly, yeah. I mean, like, for March, the production of the ballots is around, just the printing is about one point four. The VIP is around one point nine. But in November, the ballots are around three point two, and the voter guide's around two point seven.
Are those, are those listed in the forms, I, I'm not sure if I?
I think so, I think it's all, yeah, I think, no, okay, maybe not.
Okay, well, you, you said them out loud, so I guess people that are interested. Um, and then, on the facilities rental line, that's another large item, the one point seven, how much of that is the lease on the warehouse?
One point six, just under one point six, one point five six, I think it is.
Okay. And then my last questions are around the, the Prop J V B M processing. And, um, is that, is that also within the, the non-personal services, or is that in a different category? I, I know it's something like a hundred eighty thousand, or around that order, two hundred thousand.
So that would be in the ballot production, assembly.
Is that?
Print or printing, yeah.
Oh, it's under the printing category?
Yeah.
Okay, and then what, what, um, company do you use for that, out of curiosity?
A and H.
Okay. All right, um, yeah, so that covers my questions, and, oh, and last, lastly, um, with the, the voter outreach, you know, the RFPs you do for that, how many, how many organizations apply, have been applying for those, and how many do you award?
Oh, I don't know, I, the top of my head, I couldn't tell you the number that, uh, applied. That I think we had like twelve, or fourteen, or I think, that we issued grants to.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's all the questions I had, um. Commissioners? Any other questions, President Stone?
Thanks, I just actually had a question about the translation, um, services, if there's any, and you, it's totally fine if you don't know this off the top of your head, I could also ask you later, um, just if um, there's feedback on the translation at all, um, using the outside vendor, for example. I think, um, Cantonese is the primary dialect in, uh, San Francisco. I don't know if the ballots are in Mandarin or in Cantonese, um, but those types of things, are there feedback loops that are given from the public to the specific vendor? Um, and you may, like I said, you may not know this off the top of your head, I'm just, I'm just curious, and perhaps I could ask you for the, uh, for that at a later date. Um, it's more just a question to make sure that voters who are using the services are feeling, you know, are accommodated effectively, and have the tools to be able to share if it's not, um, if the translation isn't as effective, and I know you mentioned that other departments use it, so I'm sure it's, you know, I'm sure that it is all, uh, well documented in terms of feedback, I was just curious what that process looks like.
So, uh, we get feedback on pretty much everything. And we also get feedback on the translations, as does our vendor, because translations are a rather hot topic. So, our vendor actually receives very positive, uh, reviews, but also a lot of input from people on, on the translations. Uh, it's, it's not uncommon for us to provide translations to the state, to use on state materials. Uh, we actually are, are a part of a, I guess, a working group with the state before each election, where, when there's time, we review the, the, the translations from the state's vendors, and then we provide feedback and all. It's not uncommon for us to provide, our vendor to provide translations that are in, in fact, are used statewide, um, then also in other counties, and, um, so yeah, so there, there certainly have been input, and our, we, I, you know, we, we receive good information that our translations are, are, are accurate. Um, and as far as the dialects, the dialects are spoken, so that the characters are the same, regardless, regardless of the dialect. Uh, so, uh, and then we use traditional Chinese characters, we don't use the simplified Chinese. Um, and, uh, that may be a, a local flavor on the characters, I don't know if, if other counties are, are moving to simplified. But in San Francisco, we still stay with the traditional character.
Thank you.
I, I have a follow-up on that, actually, so, the state, the state does its own translations of all of the state contests and measures, and then, but you can kind of opt out of those if you want, they're just made available?
Uh, no, there's no mechanism really to opt out of the straight, state translations, uh, but there's a timeframe that the state translators, if they uh, finish the, the translations in time, counties who want to can review and provide feedback, and there's a small group of counties in San Francisco is one of them, that actually participates. And there's a small group of counties in San Francisco is one of them, that actually participates in this feedback mechanism to the state's translators. And we often find, especially the Chinese, we find a, a lot of bad translating. We find material that could be translated better, we provide our input, which is adopted by the state. Um, we have in the past, though, if, if we, if there is a bad translation on a, a candidate name, a transliteration of a candidate's name, or a uh, a, a ballot designation, which is the, the uh profession or work that, that a candidate does, and it's a local candidate, then we will, we will uh provide the local translation or transliteration in place of the state information.
I see, so in the cases where you, you're providing, where the state is using it, they're, they're basically going with your suggestion in that review process?
Correct.
And then are your suggestions coming from, do you pay the vendor to do the translation of the state material, or is this stuff that's coming more from citizens and staff?
It's a, it's a combination of both our personnel and, and the vendor. Uh, because the vendor, like, just as Commissioner Stone was, was somewhat referencing, now that, that there's a great uh reputation that, you know, that translators can acquire if, if they do good work. And so our translator, uh, and they also have a, like a really, they have a passion really for translations. And so they don't charge us, but they'll look at the state translations and make the recommendations, along with our personnel, just so that the content is better for the voters.
I see, that's interesting, the state wouldn't just use them directly if they knew about them, but
Yeah, I don't want the states to use them directly.
Oh, okay, all right, can be local secret then, okay. Um, yeah, I don't have further questions, um, commissioners, anything else? Okay, so let's, let's, um, Director Ernst, did you have any additional comments in response to what's been mentioned, or?
No.
Okay.
I just, I just wanted to say, I mean, this, so this is not the final budget, this is, you know, this is our initial proposal. Uh, you know, we, commission, if you have thoughts, we can certainly tickles in consideration, same with the mayor's office. So if they have thoughts, of course, it's, they have the, the pen though, too. Um, but this is not done until February twenty first.
Okay, un- understood. Uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
I, I would just reiterate, Director Ernst, I, I think, I know you've been, you know, you've made some pretty um good cuts there, I think I saw what is like twenty one percent decrease in twenty three, twenty four, and a three point seven percent increase in twenty four, twenty five. I, I, I think you should throw, I think you should go for the gold and put in for those machines, because you're gonna have to get them eventually, so you might as well put it out there. And then if they, if the mayor cuts it, you say, well, I told you so. I, I'm, you know, I, it's a little, it's a little uh preventive. Just, you know, because what, what, what happens, I, I, I just think it's only gonna get bigger, the ballot.
Yeah, I, I think it's good, good advice.
So, okay.
Okay, thank you, so let's, let's open it up to public co- comments. Um, President Stone, you wanna man the lines? Oh, just actually, Commissioner Hayden Crowley, you've got your hand up. Um, okay. Yeah, President Stone?
Yes, I will manage that, just bear with me for a moment, I wanna pull up a timer.
Okay, so um, members of the public, if anyone would like to comment?
Yep, okay, we have one, we have one uh hand raised at this point. Um, Mr. Turner, I have unmuted you, and once you begin, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, commissioners, and I wanted to associate myself with the uh comments of Commissioner Crowley, but not on the sorting machines, on the tabulation and the voting machines. Um, I think it's uh fairly obvious that there is a bit of an elephant in the room. No one has mentioned the cost savings that would be obtained if we joined the ranks of New Hampshire and Mississippi, these technology giants that are part of the United States, moving ahead of California, that are enjoying the cost savings benefit of moving toward open source systems. Uh, no one has mentioned that there is basically by a simple numbers crunch, about a million dollars a year at least to be gained for the budget uh by moving toward the better technology systems that we know are looming, but unfortunately in San Francisco have been blocked by a, a lack of political will. So uh, I think that deserves acknowledgement. Also, uh, it would be great if there was focus on outreach regarding ranked choice voting. There seemed to be an issue in Oakland where they had the meltdown regarding their proprietary systems and uh ranked choice voting system. This last election, there was one candidate chosen on one day, and then they pushed the button, and there was another candidate chosen following that. And uh, it raised some concerns in the public about a lack of education campaign. And I'm hoping that San Francisco dedicates money and effort toward educating the public uh regarding ranked choice voting, especially the elderly who seem to struggle a bit, and, and other vulnerable communities. Um, other than that, thanks uh to all of you for your good work. We think the public thinks this is not a place for cuts. Um, the uh Elections Department should be well-funded uh and protected. Uh, but we also are saddened that we are failing to move forward with the work of the county over the past twenty years to push for open source voting systems. We think the commission has failed at this point to recognize the issue and the national security involved with the issue. And so we're hoping that we, that we join uh New Hampshire in doing a pilot as soon as possible. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I have remuted you, and let me just confirm, there are no, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you, President Stone, so that closes public comment for this item. Um, so now we have an opportunity to do any remaining discussion, um, I guess. I, I, I should ask, are we, do we need to make a recommendation to the full commission? DCA Flores, does the commission need to approve the department's budget, or is this something that we just have to have a hearing to discuss it?
No, I think it's just a hearing to discuss it. Um, if there's any approval necessary, that would probably be a second hearing with a
Yeah.
You give it to Director Ernst to take.
President Stone, thank you, DCA Flores.
I do think it would be valuable, um, and we can talk about this offline, um, uh Chair Jordanic, um, about including access to this recording ahead of the next review, so that commissioners who are not on the committee can potentially watch the conversation, should they have additional questions. Um, and uh, I also think that, you know, the, the, once this document is uh more up to date and has been submitted as pertains to the memo, I do think there's value in us incorporating that on the commission's website. Um, I mean, perhaps it's under BoPAC, um, but I think it provides a lot of color for the public to understand why certain funds were allocated the way that they were. Um, so that's just an additional request for the commission that I would, I think we can talk about in the next meeting. That's all.
Okay. Uh, thank you, President Stone, Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
Um, thank you, um, Chairman Jordanic, aren't we required to put the recording up on the um website as soon as possible? I, I, I think that that's part of a sunshine. I, I had to do, I, I had to put up the recording for the sheriff's office on the budget, like the next, like within an hour.
It'll
Point of clarification. Yeah, I was, yes, and I was saying that in the pa- in the packet agenda, so when you, when you're, for the packet, we can have the link to the BoPAC meeting, so that it's easily accessible for commissioners to go and review as a reminder.
Okay, okay, and, and then just another point of clarif- uh, a request for clarification. Uh, if I wanna uh put something together, Director Ernst, for us to have Chromebooks, do I just uh submit a rationale instead of submit it to you in the next couple of days or so?
Yeah, doesn't, for that, 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 nothing fancy, just make it known, we'll go from there.
Well, sure, it won't be long, believe me.
Sure there's verbs.
But it, but it'll, but it'll be very well reasoned.
Buy Chromebooks.
Well, other commissions have them, we do not want to be FOIA'd, period end.
The only thing I can think of is if you wanna go beyond that, if you, if there are certain features or functions you want on that Chromebook, then
Oh, okay, yeah, I, 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 thank you, um, I, I would like, I, I like the fact that on WebEx, we can raise our hand electronically, and that is a really great feature to have in order to um follow Robert's Rules of Order, which we are supposed to be doing by bylaws um in our uh commission meetings, that we should have that function. And I don't know if that's some, that's probably an app that we would incorporate into the Chromebooks. But I know that other commissions, okay, it's my husband on the civil service, uses that, thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, so commissioners, I mean, because we are meeting today, we do have an opportunity to discuss if we would like to make a request related to the commissioner's portion of the budget. Um, we don't have to discuss that today, but, or maybe we're not prepared to, but we, we do have the ability. I know there had been some interest in maybe doing something around the commission secretary position, but I don't know, President Stone, do you have any preference on whether we spend time on that today?
I was wondering if someone was gonna ask about that. Um, so as it pertains to the commission secretary, we actually had twenty applicants um for the existing role, and I didn't think that it was appropriate for us to ask for additional funding base, and I've reviewed, done a first review of those candidates. And there are qualified candidates, um, who I believe would be appropriate, and therefore I didn't think it would behoove us to include uh an additional ask for funding for someone else, if we're gonna move forward with the existing. Um, at one point, I had thought parallel path was the way to go, but um, it just isn't logical. So as it pertains to the secretary, I don't think there's um an item. I think uh we can talk about quickly some thoughts here, if there are additional funds that we wanna discuss. But other than that, I think we can punt that to the full commission for discussion um in February.
Okay. Sounds good, uh, Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
Um, I'll be candid, I haven't been on this commission long enough to really assess what our needs are, other than the fact that I think that we should have Chromebooks to, to, so that we, our business stays on a city computer. I mean, DCA Flores and Director Ernst, are you using personal computers from home? No, so even though we are not city employees per se, um, that doesn't diminish our role, because we perform a very valuable role, and we can be FOIA'd and all kinds of different things. Um, and I just don't want somebody in my, in my personal computer, it, yeah, I just don't. I wanna look at my email on, on uh, uh, you know, on, on a city-owned Chromebook. Um, so anyway, I've already written my proposal. So, but I, as far as the, as far as the other stuff is concerned, I just haven't been around long enough to kind of figure out really what is meaningful. And at this point, since we are facing such a significant budget um, uh, challenge, I'm not sure we would get a hearing on it anyway. Um, so, you know, we, we gotta, we gotta, you know, start slowly, and, and, in my opinion, I'm starting slowly, and then we'll ask. Now, on the other hand, Director Ernst needs to be asking for some other things, but that, that's, we can push him.
Okay, um so anything else? Um were there any like amendments to the budget that people were thinking about, you know, increasing the outreach funds or anything, or um? I know you had mentioned something along those lines, President Stone?
Yeah, thank you, I think that um, I, you know, the comments that I made were not necessarily items that I think require action, I think just bringing them up to the department is enough for um their consideration. The only thing that I would want to see additional funding for, though I recognize the budget shortfall, is those grants um in twenty twenty four. That was the only thing that I kind of felt based on the needs of the twenty twenty four um election, that perhaps increasing that grant funding. But um, I also understand the department and the director's rationale as to why it's remaining the same. So um, I, I don't feel that that's like a directive that I want to make to the department, but I do think an explanation as to why was an import, why it would remain the same was an important um element of transparency.
Okay, sounds good. And then Director Ernst, do you think for the next meeting, you could maybe research the number of organizations that applied for the funds? And then the number that were, received the funds?
Yes.
I'm curious on that, okay, great. Okay, so if there are no um additional things people have to say, um we can um move on to the next item, which is the adjournment. So the time is now four thirty one PM. Um, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.
All right, guys, thanks.
Thank you, Director Ernst, for your work.
Thank you very much.